From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Mike, can we do the flag salute? Board reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters, Supervisor Scrivner, Supervisor Maggert, Supervisor Couch, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. As some of you may have heard when I had the hot mic, we'll next have our flag salute led by Supervisor Mike Maggert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we begin, well, first of all, I want to welcome you all to the Monday, July 25, 2002, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, a special meeting, 6:00 p.m. for our budget. And before we begin, I want to announce that we do have an interpreter available for anyone in the audience requiring translation of tonight's proceedings from English to Spanish. And so we have Mr. Fernando Lopez here. Mr. Lopez, if you could please come down to the podium so we can determine if your services are required this evening. Thank you. Good evening.
[Spanish] I'm Fernando Lopez. If you want to speak, go ahead.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. And so now we'll ask if there's anyone present that wants to speak on anything not on our agenda, so anything that's not related to the budget. Do we have any public presentations? Okay, very good. Seeing none then, we'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Do we have anything this evening? No? Okay, very good. Then we will move on then to our one-agendized item. This is under the County Administrative Office, Public Meeting to Receive Comments for Fiscal Year 2022-23 Recommended Budget. I'll turn to Ryan Alsop, our CAO. Good evening, Mr. Alsop.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ms. Martinez, our CFO, will handle this item tonight.
Thank you, Senator.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Today, I will go briefly over the preliminary budget, and then we'll go ahead and proceed with year imbalances and the recommended changes that we are presenting to you today. Just for high-level, our budget process, we are at the adjustment box. Tonight, we are here to provide your board with an update to the preliminary budget. For the general and fire funds, it is also an opportunity for the public to provide additional comments and to get direction on any budget revisions before the budget is finalized for budget hearings August 30. The county's preliminary budget totals $3.3 billion. This is approximately $81.6 million more than last fiscal year. As I previously indicated in my preliminary budget presentation, the increase in the general fund of $33.9 million includes the cost of the compensation reform completed, which afforded employees a 2% increase and a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. It also includes mandated programs in our probation department and the increase in realignment funded to be transferred for the Department of Human Services. The preliminary budget included a $5.5 million of carryforward toward operations. That's our budget gap. Here's a little bit more detail on our general fund. $918.3 million is our general fund. It includes $398.4 million in net general fund allocations to our departments, and we fund those allocations with what we call our discretionary revenue, which is our property tax, sales tax, vehicle license fees of $392.9 million, which is, will leave that 5.5 gap that I talked about. The remaining funding for the general fund comes from licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenue, and charges for services, and those sources are required to be used for specific purposes. If I were to name this budget, I would call it a status quo budget, a budget living within our means. While it's a structurally balanced, it still leaves approximately 131 sworn positions within the sheriff unfunded and not available to serve our community. And the district attorney continues to deal with increased case load and limited staff. Our libraries are not open, I mean, full-time, they're only open a few hours a week, and the budget does not include capital or infrastructure replacement for our fire department. Tonight, I will be providing your board with the closing fund balance, also known as carryforward from June 30, and the final property tax revenue estimates based on the final assessment rule. After tomorrow's presentation, we will rebalance the budget and make adjustments to the preliminary budget based on critical needs and your board priorities and direction. The main goal is to align one-time resources with one-time uses and ongoing resources, such as the property tax increase, with operational ongoing costs. We received final numbers from the assessor, and the total assessed value is $115 billion. This is an increase of $11.7 billion or $13.16 from last year. Those are big numbers, but I want to make sure that your board and the public understand that the entire assessed values for the county includes the cities, it includes the county, it includes the money that goes to the school and the special district. Not every dollar increase comes to the county. The increase is most likely the result of prices and market activity in real estate. Secure properties are increasing 7.3. However, the assessor has already indicated that the rise in interest rates will likely result in a reversal of this trend in the coming year. Including this increase of 13.16%, since 2014, the county's total assessed valuation has increased 16.1% or 1.88% per year only. This continues to be significantly below other counties and significantly below, once we compare it to the Consumer Price Index of increase of 27.65%. Here's a graph showing our assessed value growth in the last 10 years. As you can see, it is actually pretty flat. We have seen small increases since 2016, but we see that the blue line at the bottom is our oil and gas, and you see the fluctuations that are happening. I included this graph. We have the data since 1981, and I think it's important to note that while the increase in property tax revenue from oil and gas is positive news, the assessed value of oil and gas properties has declined by 50% since 2014. In 2014, oil and gas accounted for 33% of the total assessed value. Last year was only 11%. For fiscal year 2223, oil and gas assessed value represents 14% of the total. Other than last year, 14% is the lowest in the county history that I have in front of you. The large one-time percentage increase in oil and gas of 41.4 has a minimal overall impact because it has declined so much over the years. This graph shows the assessed valuation of oil and gas, and it's showing its downward slope. This type of property tax is also becoming really unpredictable. Last year, we saw a decline of 24% in value. This year, we've seen an increase of 41.4%. And as a result of this unpredictability, it is recommended that we take caution allocating those resources to ongoing expenses. Now, our general fund, with the change in assessed value, the total property tax results in an additional $16.5 million in discretionary revenue from the preliminary budget. We have a carryforward of $67 million, and this carryforward is primarily the result of the significant challenges our departments are having in recruiting and retaining staff. We also received one catch-up payment of property tax from one taxpayer that missed their payment two fiscal years ago, and we are seeing, continue to see, the one-time sales taxes associated with solar projects. The additional property tax added with the $67 million in net fund balance give us $85.5 million in additional available resources. These resources are recommended to fund one-time projects and additional ongoing vital services. I can stop here if your board may have any questions, or I can go ahead and continue with the recommended changes.
I don't see any questions. Please continue. Thank you.
This is a long list, but if you look at the bottom, you'll see that $16.5 million additional ongoing discretionary revenue. So this table represents the allocation that we're recommending. The $5.5 million on the top is a budget gap that we identified in the preliminary budget. The following three items is increases to the sheriff's department. As you may be aware, they continue to experience challenges retaining and recruiting, not only store personnel but also other vital classification. The first allocation of $767,932 is proposed for the recently approved reclassification of record staff so that those hard-to-fill positions are available to free up personnel to assist with our community, be out in the community. The next $1 million is set aside to establish a housing stipend for sheriff deputies assigned to hard-to-fill outlying positions. And we're also proposing allocating an additional funds to the deputy trainee academy. Your board has set aside $1.3 million annually. We're recommending that we increase that amount to $2 million. The next one is our human resources. This allocation is recommended to assist the sheriff's department with their recruitment efforts and also to fulfill our responsibilities under the stipulated judgment with the Department of Justice. Information technology is the next allocation that we're recommending, $657,744, and that is to assist our information technology department. Until the county replaces the human resources payroll and finance legacy system, it is necessary to allocate those resources to continue to support those aging systems. The next one is difficult for me to recommend, but it's something that we must do. The $2.2 million is recommended for trial court funding. This allocation is the result of two recent state actions. An audit was conducted by the state comptroller that required the county to transfer fees in excess of the qualified revenue identified as part of the trial court transfer in 1997. The county has appealed that audit, and we are awaiting resolution. However, until such time decision is resolved, we must continue to comply in order to avoid penalties. In addition, with the implementation of, I want to make sure I think it's 1969, the state limited the county's ability to collect certain criminal administrative penalties without sufficient funding to backfill the entire revenue loss. So in essence, this is a mandated, this is an unfunded mandate for the county. Moving on, we have minimum wage increases for our general services department. They have, due to the number of newer and lower-paid employees, the general services division impact as a result of the minimum wage was greater than the reduction in retirement costs. An allocation of $300,000 is recommended in order to maintain existing staffing levels servicing our facilities and parks. The next one, $308.28, additional funding is recommended to make park improvements and operational improvement. This is to improve the security at our parks and the maintenance of some of our facilities in the parks. Moving on, let me make sure I got, next, the $1.3 million is for our indigent defense. Just like the district attorney, we continue to see an increase in workload for the indigent defense program. The county is mandated to cover expenses for assigned counsel for indigent individuals in the event that the public defender has a conflict or isn't available. As a result of increased workload and cost increase, we're recommending that allocation, and this is an unavoidable responsibility. You'll see $250,000 recommended for our compliance. We are hoping to staff additional, two additional officers to serve our unincorporated areas, mainly for encapment and to clean properties. The line of the increase for special services, this is a combination of a lot of things. This accounts for the changes to our life insurance costs and other small adjustments associated with payments for incentives for companies that have moved into Kern County, and we have agreements to give incentives. That last item of class and compensation, so we are recommending putting the remaining resources to set aside for a class and compensation cost for classifications that are difficult to recruit. Our human resources is working on those for your board's consideration. Now, if you look at the bottom, that's our $67 million carryforward. So these are the recommendations that we're making for that one-time funding. The first one-
Ms. Martinez, excuse me. Supervisor Maggert has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Martinez, you alluded to the increased contribution for trial court due to AB 1869 of $2,200,000. That was pending some, we're advancing the funds pending the outcome of something. Is there any chance we can get that back?
So there's two issues, two separate issues. One is the audit, and that's approximately $600,000 of that amount, and that is the amount that we could get back if we're successful on the appeal. The rest is the reduction of the fees that we will not get back, so based on the Assembly Bill.
So maybe 600 of the 2.2 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll go ahead and start with the top, from the top. This is our major maintenance and capital projects. We are recommending, we are recommending an allocation to our major maintenance and capital projects of $16.55 million. capital projects of 16.5 million dollars. I'm going to go ahead and move forward. The total cost of the projects is detailed in your attachment A of the staff report, and it's actually, the cost is 41.8 million in projects that we're recommending for funding. After factoring 13.2 million in grant revenue and other sources, we are recommending an allocation of approximately 16.6 million of the one-time carryforward and using 3.3 million of the renewed B's economic opportunity area designation. The breakdown of the projects, the first line is park improvements. And that includes improvements, park improvement in Rosemont, Boron, Le Mans, Heritage Park, Mohave, Lost Hill, Panorama Park, Casteloma Park, Virginia Park, and the current river campgrounds, restrooms, just to mention a few. The next line of 270,000 is allocated to make improvements required as part of legal mandates. The cost savings allocation of half a million will cover energy efficiency and water conservation projects that will be identified throughout the fiscal year. 8.4 million is being allocated to cover the cost of county facility maintenance required to maintain a structural integrity, reduce operational costs, provide direct public benefit, or just replace systems that are failing, such as the two HVAC systems listed. The prior year revenues reimbursement for projects that general services started and incurred last fiscal year, but will complete during this fiscal year. We're also allocating some capital purchases for the sheriff's department. They need replacement of an X-ray machine and other small items. Half a million is an extra machine. The rest are just small items. $50,000, this is a recruitment effort. We are recommending an allocation to the sheriff's office to cover the first year of a background contract to expedite recruitment of officer. 1.2 million is being set aside to complete a facility assessment that is legally required, and we are also recommending 246,000 for additional operation and improvements at the parks that are, we're working on to improve how the parks look and the maintenance. The accessory request is 67,500 for the first year of a software license to assist them with workload and hopefully improve how they complete the assessment role and how they do their work. The 2.1 million in debt service, this is the first year of our sheriff helicopter that your board approved for financing, and some of that money we are going to get back the following year. It includes the first payment for our psychiatric health facility. The way the funding works for behavioral health, we have to cover the first year, and then we're able to charge it to the federal and state programs and get reimbursed, which is in a one-year delay. So this is why we're allocating at one time. I want to go over the bottom items, starting with the 1 million. The bottom items are increases to our designations. The 1 million increase is recommended for the fiscal stability. It is the county's policy to maintain a general reserve of 10% of discretionary resources, which is approximately 41 million in this coming year. Best practices from the Government Finance Officers Association recommend a 16.6 minimum reserve. Sufficient reserves ensure financial stability, and it also provides protection with, during economic uncertainties. The 1 million allocation is recommended just to maintain the 10%. The 397,500 is recommended for the public safety recruitment and retention. Your board established a designation to assist the sheriff with recruitment and retention of officers. We pay our employees $3,000 during year three and eight of their career. The additional allocation of 397,500 increases the balance to 2 million, which we anticipate will be sufficient to cover the cost. 750,000 of the one-time resources is recommended for life remediation, to pay for cleanup projects initiated by co-compliance. With the additional resources for officers we're providing, we believe that they're going to need additional resources for cleanup. The next one is retirement, and we're recommending an increase of 15 million to the retirement designation to offset future pension costs and to mitigate service level impacts. While we saw a reduction for fiscal year 2223, it was primarily associated with the payoff of the 91 pension bonds. Last year, pension systems experienced historic returns for a change, however, things are changing. Inflation is expected to remain high, interest rate increase, and the stock market are quickly, the stock markets are quickly losing previous gains. While we will not have to serve evaluation until later in the fall, you may have seen in the news that CalPERS already reported 29 billion market loss for this year, the worst performance they had since the Great Recession. In addition, it's anticipated that our retirement system will conduct its three-year experience study that could result in actuarial assumption changes, including lowering the assumed rate of return, which immediately increases the unfunded actuarial liability and our contribution rate. For this reason, we recommended this increase. We will use it the same way we use the previous designations. It will be used to mitigate several levels of impact on future years. And the final recommendation for the one-time resources is the 28 million in to fund a portion of the first responders and emergency response communication system. This is a critical public safety replacement needing to ensure the safety of our first responders and the public. Our system is 22 years old and is becoming very difficult to get parts and maintain. The replacement system would not only solve the issues, but will also close the gap and provide for the safety of our officers. After the recommended changes, the balances in reserves and designations for the general fund will be 278.8 million. The detail of each one of the designations is in attachment B of the staff report. I will stop right here before reviewing the recommended changes for the fire fund in case your board has any questions.
Supervisor Magrath?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Martinez, you alluded to the use of, I think you said, economic opportunity area funds and allocating them to parks. Can you walk me through that one more time and how much that is?
It is 3.3 million and is the renewed B's in East Kern for Boron and Rosemont-
What's one specific economic opportunity area?
Just one. Supervisor Skriffner, when we established that, we agreed to make some improvement in East Kern, and so we are using 3.3 million for parks in Rosemont and Boron.
I'm sure he's keenly aware of that. I just was not.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. You can continue.
This is the budget, the preliminary budget for the fire fund. A total of 169.3 million. It includes funding for all firefighter positions. However, the preliminary budget did not include sufficient funding to cover capital or infrastructure needs. You see that big zero on their capital assets there. With the increase in the assessed value, the fire fund will see approximately 4.7 million more from the, in property tax from the preliminary budget. Once that's combined with their carryforward of 9.1 million, they'll have 13.8 million in additional available resources. The department will use approximately 6.7 million toward the 28 million in capital and equipment replacement, but it does not give sufficient funds to cover the approximately 100 million of fire station replacement and maintenance they have. They will set aside 156,637 in a chapter operational area. This is pursuant to an agreement we have with the city of Chapter. And then they will use $7 million to replace in a general designation fiscal stability and retirement, just like the general fund. This prudent set aside of resource is important because of fluctuation in oil and gas and the ongoing needs of capital and infrastructure, and especially the retirement costs related to safety personnel as they may continue to increase. So today's budget recommendations have been thoughtfully developed and aligns with the critical needs identified by our residents over the past year, especially for public safety. This concludes my prepared remarks, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time or after the conclusion of public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. I don't see any questions from the board, so we'll go ahead and go to public comment. Thank you so much. Okay, am I standing corrected? Supervisor Cow.
Did we make any changes? I didn't see them in there. Any additions for animal control or animal services?
We actually included spay and neuter funds in the preliminary budget, 350,000. So we did not add additional funds other than that funding.
I know we're, I know it's full, and so we're trying to get as many animals out and adopted as possible. Is that, and I'm not, I'm not making light of it, is that the extent of our effort to do that is more spay and neuter? What are we doing?
We also, last year, Supervisor Couch to the chair, we actually allocated care funding for them to help them with transportation vans. We also bought them some equipment that was much needed. When we didn't have volunteers, they had difficulty cleaning, you know, at the shelters, so we bought like an industrial washing machine for the plates, and so we have allocated some funding for them. We have not provided, they are staffing to the guideline your board provided, but if your board may wish to provide additional resources, we can make that change.
Thank you.
Ms., just to tier off of that, that 350,000, that's an increase from the 250,000 that we had allocated before, and so that's, is that 100,000 additional for this coming fiscal year, or did we do that for this, for this current fiscal year? Or the past one, I guess it would be, since we're already in the current?
Last year, we gave them 350, which was an increase of 100,000 from the 250. This year, we continue with the 350.
We continue with the 350. Okay, that was my question. I couldn't remember if we bumped it up this time or if it was last time, but I knew we bumped it up. I think that the question for me is going to be, are they, if we looked at increasing that allocation, are they able to spend what they have? And I know they've been challenged with being able to find, find the spay-neuter buses, the vets to do the work. And so I don't, I think that right now, that's their current struggle rather than a funding allocation for the spay-neuter. But if Nick Cullen, our director, has anything different to tell us, then I think we proceed accordingly. And here he comes. He's there. Sorry, Nick, I didn't see you in the, in the background there. I would have spoken of you more fondly if I knew you were here. Go ahead, please.
Thank you for the kind words. Chairman Skriffner, members of the board, as far as spay-neuter funding is concerned, yes, we appropriated 350,000 last year. We actually spent over 400, and we'll have no problem spending another 350,000 this year.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, then I'll go ahead and open it up to public comments. If you would like to make a comment on the budget, now is the time to do so. We asked our speakers to state their name, and please observe our two-minute time limit. If you do require interpretation from our Spanish interpretation provider, Mr. Lopez, then we'll increase that time allocation to four minutes to account for the need for Come forward, please.
Okay.
Good evening.
Oh, yes. Good evening to you, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Board, and to our Honorable First Lady. And so I'd just like to say, when you have a budget, you want to hear, see everybody get their max, you know, so they can be happy if possible, but it's not always possible. So I'll put it like this. If you were the builder of city that would hold a billion people, everything brand-new in it, but you did not put law enforcement in there, the fire department in there, and the district attorney in there, if you did not include them in there, nobody would want to move into a city with everything brand-new but the criminals. See? So it's extremely important that we take care of our law enforcement, district attorney, and fire department. You got to have them. And if I went anywhere throughout the world, I would say this each and every time I got up. You have to have the law. This is what the Lord, Romans, Chapter 13, he claim them. He say to his ministers, "To protect us." It's something you just got to have, whether you like them or not. To keep us safe, you got to have them. See? And so I wanted to state that. And then I also would like to say, yesterday, if you've seen the news, three guys went into the church where the bishop was preaching and robbed him right in front of all the people, took all his jewelry and everything, saved maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. This is just yesterday. Then Vegas, we had another group of people going, breaking in car, and the guy come outside to see what was taking place. They told him to go back inside. He did go back inside, but they still shot him in the back. This is something that the Lord is telling us to pay attention because it's what's coming up. The Lord says it's going to get worse and worse. It is. People playing, they ain't watching, they don't even really care because it ain't happening to them. But this evil that we live in here is strong, and it's coming in a very, 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 very big way. And Supervisor, may I say, the 1% action that we're looking forward to, I'm hoping you guys will get it because it'd be a great way to thank you guys, because money will be coming to the law of the fire and district attorney when you guys retire, and it'll be because of you guys allowing it to come in. So I'm hoping God let us have that, and it's credited to your account for making it possible, looking out after the city, because that's what you'll be doing for many, many, many years to come, for allowing us to put it on. And so I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank God bless.
Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. First and foremost, my name is Ivan Sandoval. Yeah, first and foremost, I'd like to thank CAO Ryan Alsop for meeting with residents and answering our many, many inquiries. Over the last few months, residents of San Jose Avenue in Delano, California have been meeting to discuss the state of their street. Although the street is zoned for residential use, the parcels on the mile-long road do not have access to basic utilities. Traffic on the street causes an environmental burden for residents, and during the dry months of the year, vehicles lift large amounts of dust in the air, makes it hard to breathe, especially with kids with asthma who are playing outside. During the winter months, the street is almost impossible to traverse because of its clayey nature. Vehicles get stuck, and kids who need to walk to school find the street daunting. We believe this street would be a great candidate for CMAC funding. And there's the issue of electrifying the neighborhood. After preliminary discussions with Southern California Edison, we're happy to report that they're willing to electrify the street if the county provides the necessary documents. With the county having the right of way, we asked the Board of Supervisors to set aside some funds to cover the costs of poles, wires, and strategically place transformers throughout San Jose Avenue. I hope, you know, we look forward to working closely with the county to meet our rural residents' basic needs, and you'll be hearing more from them in a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name's Ramondo Macia Sanchez, and I'm a resident of San Jose Avenue in the city of Delano. And I'm here to ask the county to set aside some funds to help with the installation of utilities like the light down San Jose Avenue and also the pavementation of that road. As of right now, the road is just a dirt road. During the summertime, it gets real dusty with cars driving down that road. I got kids. We lived on that street, so I'm, you know, I'm worried for them one day catching valley fever, as I have caught it before. And during the wintertime, when it rains, it gets real muddy. It's a struggle to get in and out of that street. It's a struggle to get in and out of that street. And at the moment right now, I'm building my house there, along with some of my neighbors that do already have a house there built. We don't want to live just off solar panels and batteries. During the wintertime, we don't get that much sunlight, and it makes it harder for us to run electricity in our house. And that's all I ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name is Leonardo Ledesma, and I'm a resident of the road San Jose Avenue. Well, I just turned 18, and I live there with my parents. We've been living there for approximately five years now. And well, ever since we moved there, we've been having the same problem, which is basically the road and the electricity, because we have no electricity. And well, in the summer, it gets really hot, and we have a lot of struggle, like turning on the AC or like simple stuff like the fridge or stuff like that. And well, in the winter, when it gets, when it rains and it gets cloudy, we don't have enough of the sun to charge up the solar panels, which is a struggle because we've been out of electricity like for days. And well, over there, with our water, it runs with the well. And basically, if there's no electrical, we don't have water either. So in the summertime, it's either we turn on the water pump, like the electrical, or the AC. We don't have enough energy for both, which, I mean, for me, it's like, I could have, it's very hard for me, but for my little brothers, since I have little brothers, I feel there are some times where I feel stressed out because I feel like they don't deserve that. I feel like they should like live in a normal house. And well, the road, well, we've been living there for five years, and every single year, we've been getting stuck because of the mud. We've been there for like, we've been stuck for about three hours in the morning just trying to get to school. And well, I feel like it's, I feel like we shouldn't be dealing with that in some sort of way, because I feel like, it's not like we're in the middle of nowhere. Like, there's houses around there, and there's a lot of people there. And I feel, at the same time, I feel sad because I feel for my brothers. Like, for me, I'm 18 already, like, I don't know, I just, I just feel bad for them, you know? And that's all I got to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Who'll be next, please? If you plan on making a comment, we'd ask if you'd please come up to the front row to allow us to move things along. You see, when you folks in the back are wanting to speak, it would help if you moved up to the front, please.
Mi nombre es Nicolás Guillén.
How much?
Nicolás Guillén.
Good afternoon, my name is... Good afternoon, my name is Nicolás Guillén.
Vengo del área de Fuller Acres, aquí en una comunidad rural de aquí de Bakersfield.
I come from the area of Fuller Acres, here, rural area here in Bakersfield.
Yo quisiera que nos echaran la mano en esa área porque tengo veintitantos años viviendo en el área y hasta ahorita no tenemos banquetas, electricidad en la calle, drenajes.
I've been living there for over 20 years, and I would like to ask for your help. In those 20 years, we have not had sidewalks, electricity, lights, streetlights.
Hay mucha tierra porque el pavimento, lo que es la calle está muy angosta.
There's a lot of dust there. The streets are very narrow.
Aunque parece que aunque son calles pequeñas, también necesitamos topes en ellas porque hay mucha gente que corre muy demasiado.
They may be small, neighborhood's small streets, but we need speed bumps because there are a lot of people driving fast around there.
Hay muchos niños en la calle en las horas escolares.
There's many schoolchildren walking down the streets and a lot of cars traveling very fast.
Yo quisiera saber, de esos 26 años que estoy viviendo en esa área, ¿para dónde están ganando mis taxes que pago anualmente?
I would like to know, in those 26-plus years I've been living in that area, where does my tax, the taxes I've been paying, where does that money go?
Es lo mismo desde que yo caí en esa área.
Since I started living there, it's been the same story.
Todo hace falta pero nadie dice de ponernos algo.
We lack everything, but no one talks about providing anything.
Es todo lo que tengo que decir, muchísimas gracias.
All I have to say, thank you very much. Thank you. Supervisor Couch?
Yeah, would you ask the gentleman to leave his name and contact information with Mr. Alsop over there? There's a lot going on in Fuller Acres that I would like to bring you up to speed on. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. I'm not trying to step into your neighborhood, Supervisor Couch, but, and I don't see anybody here from Public Works or from Code, but how do we allow occupancy in homes that don't have running water or electricity? And how, this one gentleman said he's about to build a house, I think it was on San Jose Avenue or Shafter. If they don't have a guarantee of water or electricity, how is he gonna get a permit to build a house?
Supervisor Maggard, if that's a question to me, I'll try my best to answer it through the chair.
You're the one that's at the bottom of the stick, and it all flows down to you.
Yeah, yeah. Frankly, in my conversations with Mr. Sandoval and the group, I was flabbergasted that there were folks out there living for the period of time they were living, I mean, families with no electricity and building homes, and I had the same question. These are things that I'm gonna have to work through with Public Works. Anticipating a question from you all on this, it's my intention to bring back a final budget for you in August that will attempt to address all of these issues for this community there, including the electricity to the extent possible without really knowing much about it. We can certainly talk to, I'm assuming, Pacific Gas and Electric and figure out what we need to do, but I will work to bring back solutions to you in the final budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Any other questions from the board before we proceed? Okay, seeing none. Next speaker, please.
Hello, good afternoon. My name's Lombardo Chavez. I'm actually a resident from the San Jose Avenue Road. So pretty much, I'm kind of like building a house right now, so I'm like almost done with it, you can say. And pretty much, so I just wanted to ask you guys, if we can get like some type of help with the electric, because honestly, we're just living off solar panels, and like to us, it's kind of tough, especially like they said, like during wintertime, or like it's not enough, you know, for like, for like the heater and all that. So pretty much, we just want to see if we get any type of help. I just got a, I got a one-year-old daughter, and honestly, I really don't like, don't want to see her like growing up in that. I mean, it's cool, but it's just like the road is like, I feel like we need some type of pavement, and especially, to me, it's most important like electricity, because like solar panels and then the batteries, like they said, like, we use generators sometimes, but it's not enough. So we just wanted to see if we could like some type of help for that, for that problem. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Mr. Alsop, I was gonna turn to you. I think we're all up here, I'm not gonna speak my colleagues, but I'll speak myself. I'm a little perplexed at how houses are being built on that street, I think along the lines of what you said. And so what I would like is an answer to that from Public Works tomorrow when we have a discussion, perhaps under Board Member Announces for Reports, PM or AM session would be fine, whenever they're able to put that together. So what did you want to say? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, out of full respect to the folks who are speaking here, I'm a little taken aback on how that's happening and how permits are being issued for that, but we will have our Public Works Director here tomorrow to answer those questions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Of course. Supervisor Couch?
It would be good if we could get everyone who's here tonight who's having this problem, if we could get, I'm not asking them to come to the microphone and give this to them, I'm asking them to give this information to you, Mr. Alsop, their address, where they're building that. I don't know if it's a public road or if it's a private road. I got a lot of questions about that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you reset the clock, please, and we'll go ahead and let the speakers proceed? Yeah, that's okay. Are you all finished? Okay. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna be translating for him. Awesome, thank you.
Stand by while we work out the microphone issue.
I'll turn it up.
Please proceed.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Leonardo Ledesma.
My name is Leonardo Ledesma.
Vivo también en la San Jose Avenida.
I also live on San Jose Avenue.
Este quería que nos, si pudieran echarnos la mano con eso de la electricidad.
I was hoping you all can help us with the issue of electrifying our neighborhood.
Que creo que no es una necesidad sino una emergencia.
I don't think it's as much a need as it is an emergency.
Porque en este tiempo o en tiempo de lluvia, que los paneles no cargan, este llega uno a la casa del trabajo y encuentra que la hielera, toda la comida está echada a perder. ¿Por qué? Porque no hay luz.
Sometimes during the months where we don't get enough sunlight, we arrive home from work to find that the refrigerator has stopped running and all of the food has gone bad.
Ahorita en este tiempo, que trabaja uno en el campo, tiene que aguantar uno el calor en el campo y llegar a la casa y encontrarte que tu casa está más caliente adentro que afuera.
So right now, we are working out in the fields, and it's incredibly hot, and once we get home, we find that our homes are even hotter than it is outside.
Este pues nosotros quisiéramos que nos echaran la mano con eso porque como les digo es una emergencia.
Just hoping that you all could help us with this because it is an emergency.
Pues sí, es una emergencia y como les digo es difícil uno con familia, que tus hijos a lo mejor no te dicen pero tú los ves que tienen calor.
It's difficult when you have a family, and you can see your children, perhaps they don't complain, but you can see them suffering from the heat.
Si nos pudieran echar la mano con eso, se los agradeceríamos mucho de corazón y los invitamos para que vayan a caminar la calle para que vean que no estamos exagerando, que vean la necesidad que tiene la gente.
If you all could help us out with that, we would be very appreciative of it from the bottom of our hearts. We invite you all to come out to our street and see that we're not exaggerating today. We ask for you to come and walk that street with us.
Y muchas gracias por tu tiempo.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, Mr. Alsop, did you have something that you want to say? One thing I want to say before you do. I have homes in my district, and you know, I'll tell you, the Tatchby area has several homes that are off the grid by choice, where they don't have the electricity service, they are on batteries, they're on solar, they're on, they have their own wind turbines. But so, but this situation is something I think we're all very curious about. And so, Mr. Alsop, please proceed.
I just wanted to let Mr. Sandoval know on behalf of, I'd like to go out there this week, and I'll bring the Public Works Director with me to go out on the street, to walk it and take a look at it so that we can see what's going on. But again, you know, this is, these are compelling statements for me anyway, and I'm sure the board members, we'll get to the bottom of it, we'll take a look at it, but I'm committing to my bosses, our board here, and to you, that we will do everything we can to try and solve some of these issues. Some of them seem fairly easy to solve. I don't know much about the electricity situation. We'll find out about it, and if it's something that we can do something about, we will. So that's at least my commitment to you all.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. Do we have any other speakers tonight? Once again, if you could please come forward to the front, if you're planning on speaking, that would help move things along.
Well, she's coming forward. May I ask Mr. Alsop another question?
Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you. Mr. Alsop, could we also get a perspective from PG&E about their responsibility? And if, particularly with the issue of the water pumps, is there a way we might be able to provide some generators that could be used to make sure they have water flow? That shouldn't be, there might be another way to provide that. Air conditioners or swamp coolers might be harder, but the pumps ought to be achievable, I think, with generators. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good evening. Please proceed.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Marcela Macia Sanchez. I am Armando Macia Sanchez's wife. I'm actually up here also for San Jose Avenue. At the beginning of our whole process, building our home process, we started doing our research about, you know, how we could do it to get lighting and all that, you know? We started calling PG&E, we started calling different companies to see how we could, were able to provide light into our property. Every single time that we tried to call PG&E, they would always say like, "Oh, no, we can't get you guys, you know, the light because we have to ask all the other properties for permission to be able to connect to your guys' property." So it was kind of making it a little bit difficult for us to, you know, even reach out for the light, but we already had paid our permits for our home. So it was like, we couldn't go back anymore. It was like we had to go forward. So we started doing our research, and we seen there's multiple families living in that street. So we were wondering how were there so many people living in that street without light? So as we started asking, you know, our neighbors, we started coming across that they were having to have batteries, they were having to do the whole solar panel systems and stuff like that. So we started thinking, okay, so we're gonna have to go that route, right? But as we started building our home as well, we started hearing, you know, their difficulties of how to maintain that the battery's charged and how difficult it can be to live off of solar panels. We're just here to ask you guys, you know, if you guys could please help us out on that situation. It is a need. It's a real, like, big need for how a home to run, and that'll be it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Maggard has a question for you, ma'am, if you, before you, before you go, ma'am, excuse me. Supervisor Maggard, I think, has a question he wants to direct to you. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm not being antagonistic at all with this question, but I'm just interested, why would you move to this neighborhood if it has all those problems? What is it that draws you? Family or something that's nearby, or?
Actually, I forgot to mention this. My father owns a property in Lidle Avenue. They were having the same issues in that street. You guys helped my father with the pavement on the street, and he does have light. So that's the reason why, well, we grew up in a, it's kind of like a ranch, so we grew up in that lifestyle. So that property, they mentioned that property to my father, so I always wanted to grow up, you know, like my father raised us.
Yeah, that's what you know, huh?
So I bought it.
So is your house on the same property as your father, but it faces in a different direction?
That is correct. So my backyard and his backyard are connected.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Any other speakers, please? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Very good. Well, then I'll return to the board for any comments or questions of staff. Any comments or questions from the board? We will be taking this up again tomorrow and on subsequent meetings as well. Okay, seeing none. Ms. Martinez, thank you so much for your presentation. I want to thank all the speakers tonight, and we appreciate your comments, and as we've expressed, we will be investigating what's going on, not only on San Jose, but also, I know there were some questions... know there were some questions regarding one of the other neighborhoods in District Four. And, yeah, Fuller, yes, it used to be mine, so yeah, I do, I do remember it well. And there, I know that there are things in the works, just as we redistricted, as I was passing it off, and Supervisor Couch was taking it on in regards to streetlights, and so I know he'll show that information. And so, seeing no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to, tomorrow, July 26 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
We are adjourned.[1676.86]